It's the Administrator Gloria, if you will please take the role.
Trustee Cawthon?
Here.
President Klein?
Here.
O'Brien Bergland?
Here.
Staniford?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
Zappa?
Thank you. Something that I'll only do this one time. I think it's appropriate that because this is a somewhat new board, that we introduce ourselves to the public. And so I would ask if we could start down, well, we'll start with Mr. Thomas here. Jim, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, George. I'd love to. I'm Jim Thomas. I'm probably the newest member of the board, I think just under three years now. I've been a resident of North Hudson, a proud resident for 15 years. And currently, in addition to being a board trustee, I chair the Public Welfare Committee, and I participate in the Cable Access Board, and occasionally participate in intergovernmental meetings, and just basically try to do what I can to make sure that things are going as smoothly as they can for the village residents. We did put together the public awareness campaign for voice messaging, and a few other little things. I've got a few goals that I would like to achieve before the end of this term that we'll get into more detail of as time goes on, but I'm proud to be on the board.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Colleen?
I'm Colleen O'Brien Bergland. I've lived here almost 19 years. I've been on the board for three years. I was first appointed, and then just decided to stick with it. I'm on the Public Safety Committee, Public Welfare, and the Chair of the Park Board.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm Mark Zappa. I've been a resident of the village for most of my 54 years. I've been on the board for quite a while. I'm currently on Public Safety and Public Works.
Thank you. Sandra?
Sandra Whalen. I live on Helen Street, and I have lived there for nine years. This is my third term on the board, so I'm going in my sixth year. I serve on Public Works and Public Welfare, the Historical Preservation Committee, and until recently, the Cable Board. And that's all for now.
Joe?
Yeah, I'm Joe Cawthon, and I've been a resident of the village for 30 years now. I've been on, I think I'm starting my fourth term on the Board of Trustees, and the committee membership that I have is I'm on the Fire Board, the Finance Board, I chair the Safety Committee, and I'm a former Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you. And literally, our newest member on the board, Daryl?
Thank you. I am Daryl Staniford, and I, with all due respect to Joe Thomas, I am the newest person on the board.
That's right.
Just was appointed last month, so I am obviously the newbie, but not new in the village. I've had the privilege of living in the village in North Hudson now for 20 years, and I appreciate it very much. In spite of the fact that I'm new to the board, George made me Chairman of Public Works, and I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
It's a good thing, Daryl.
You'll be fine.
Put me on Finance, and I also serve on the Board of Review. I should incidentally note that even though I'm new to this board, I have represented a significant portion of the village on the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors now for 15 years. And I currently serve as Chairman of the Finance Committee, and Chairman of the Energy Committee, and Chairman of the Ad hoc Bargaining Committee, and also serve on Administration.
Thank you, Daryl. I am George Klein. I'm coming up on 32 years in the village. Pretty soon, that number will be half my life, and I think that's really saying something. I didn't realize until we went through these introductions that I've been a village resident, second longest of the members on this board. Only Mark has been on this board, or in the village longer than me. I've been on the Board of Trustees for seven years. I currently am on Finance, Board of Review. I put myself on the EMS Ambulance Board, the Intergovernmental Team, and the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan. I haven't attended some of these meetings yet because, well, I just haven't, and I'm looking forward to finding out what they're all about. My former committees were on Finance, Board of Review, Public Safety Committee, and the Building Management Committee. So there you have it. That's the board. And there are two other people I would like them to introduce themselves, and that would be Gloria.
Thank you, George. My name is Gloria Traister, and I'm the Administrator Clerk Treasurer. I've served the village of North Hudson for just over five years. My primary responsibilities are supervising the accounting, the finance, transactions, budgeting, running elections, training for the election clerks, and a plethora of other responsibilities in the clerical side of it.
Thank you, Gloria. And the gentleman on my right, or excuse me, on my left, your right, do you like the way I got out of that?
Mm-hmm.
Is Terry Dunst. Terry, would you introduce yourself?
Hi, yes, as he said. I'm Terry Dunst. I'm with the law firm Abaki Norman. This is actually the first meeting where I've sat as the village attorney, although the law firm Abaki Norman has been representing the village for quite a few years now. And I have done a few projects for the village in the last couple of years. And the function is just to provide legal advice to the board, to respond to queries from Gloria, and to try hard to keep the board from getting sued.
And a fine job you do with it, your firm. You'll notice that item number three on the agenda says Recognition of Service, Larry Larson. Larry could not be with us tonight, and so we're going to postpone that recognition until the June meeting. But because we have recognition on the agenda, I would like to take this, just a few moments here, to read a proclamation. This proclamation was actually suggested by Governor Doyle, and we've modified it slightly so that it applies to our own village clerk, Gloria Traister. And I'd like to read this now. Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation, May 3 through May 9, 2009. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and, it's the last one, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of our municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, George Klein, President of the Village of North Hudson, do hereby proclaim the week of May 3 through May 9, 2009, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Gloria Traister, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Here, here. Thank you, Gloria.
Okay. Maybe you should go on a little more. She's not quite blushing yet.
Moving on.
Moving on, yes, okay. At this time, I would ask if there are any comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to... Did I miss anything? Did I miss anything? Oh, it's, are you going, the minutes? Do you think we should do that?
Sure.
Sorry, I missed. Almost skipped approving of the meeting minutes from our Tuesday, March 31st meeting. There is one minor error. Let's go to page two, down near the bottom. You'll see the sentence that begins Larson moved to approve the recommendation for the plan commissioned on a request to AT&amp;T, et cetera, et cetera, the antenna, and an 11 by 20-foot equipment building. So we'll make that change. Did anyone find any other errors? Excuse me, that was on page three. I think that was all, wasn't it? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes as edited?
I'll move that we approve the regular Board of Trustee minutes from Tuesday, March 31st, 2009.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on the meeting minutes? If not, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Carry. Do you want to do some comments here? Seems appropriate. You got one more? Oh, there's another one. Oh, the reorg meeting. Okay. We had a reorganization meeting on Tuesday, April 21st, and I would ask if there are any changes. I have found a couple. Well, it's actually accurate. If you look down right about in the middle, you'll see Board of Park Commissioners, and you'll notice Melissa Bardil. That was accurate at that time. Is that, should we change that? Do we have to leave it the way it is? Okay, we'll discuss that change later then. Down the very bottom, "And faith that has been given him." There's an extra half in there. Where are you? The very bottom line on the first page. It reads, "And faith that has been have given him." Can we just eliminate that other half? Any other corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion that we accept these meeting minutes.
I'll move.
Mark Zappa, okay. Second?
I'll second.
Jim Thomas, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. I think we can do the comments. Are there any comments from the floor? This is an opportunity for the residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities not on today's agenda. Anybody? Thank you. It is now my, it is now quite a privilege for me to be able to introduce Les Berg, who is going to be talking about Operation Help. Les, the podium is yours. And take, then...
Monica Weeks.
Will Monica? Okay, great. If the two of you will...
No tag team.
Tag team. Excellent, Monica. I appreciate that.
George has given us the opportunity to just spend a couple of minutes to tell you what Operation Help is about. Operation Help is a nonprofit that was begun in 1981 by Bob and Mary Nazvik in Hudson. And it started out as a Christmas program for families who could not afford to do Christmas for their children. And we have turned into an organization that specializes in providing rent and utility assistance for people who can't make ends meet due to some extraordinary emergency in their lives. We get calls from people who have fallen off roofs and can't go to work and can't make their utility bill, or who are taking their children to chemotherapy every three days and can't get to work and can't make their rent payment. And all, the wide variety of trials that occur to people in our world who are living day-to-day paycheck to paycheck. As you can imagine, we're quite busy right now because we have a lot of people calling who have lost their jobs, or who have had their hours cut considerably, or just about any scenario that you can come up with. We try very hard to adhere to our guidelines and help as many people as possible, and we work very closely with a number of other nonprofits in the area. West Cap, which is a countywide and multiple countywide organization, we work very hard with the Salvation Army and Grace Place, Duwanah Brammer, up in New Richmond. So this is what Operation Help does mostly. We also do a Christmas program. So if you know someone who couldn't afford a Christmas this year, if they had children in school, you're pretty sure that we helped them have Christmas. Everybody got a gift. Everybody got towels. They got either a quilt or a blanket. They got a gift card for Christmas dinner. The kids got gifts. The kids got gifts to give their parents. So that's another thing that Operation Help does. Just to give you an idea, last year in 2008, we assisted 276 families in St. Croix County with either rent or utility assistance, or in some cases, we do some inexpensive car repairs for people who need their car to get to work. Our budget was a little over $130,000. Most of that, or all of that comes from donations or grants. We have people who send us $20 checks, and we work very hard to try and get grants from area foundations that keep us going. And our main provider is the United Way in St. Croix County, and we are very grateful to them. So 276 families last year. Hopefully, we kept 276 families in their homes. Good chance that they didn't all get to stay in their homes or pay their utility bills, but we tried. This year, so far, I didn't add them up. I'd say we're well over 60 in the last four months. April was very, very busy. May will be busy. June will be busy as Excel Energy and such can now turn off power. So once that starts happening, then we see people call us. People tend not to call us quite soon enough. They try to get on with it on their own. The reason George kind of asked us to be here is just to make you aware of our manual, our resource manual that we put together probably 10 years ago, I guess Operation Help did. We are in the midst of the second update on it, and it is a resource manual that hopefully lists every assistance place in St. Croix County and outside of St. Croix County, from the shelters to the food shelves to other places you can get rent or utility assistance. All the churches are listed. The daycares are listed. Schools, some schools are listed. I'm going to let Les talk a little bit about that, because otherwise, he didn't have a reason to be here.
As Monica mentioned, this resource manual really was developed out of a need that our phone volunteers had. As they were getting calls, people were asking questions of services that they needed, and so our volunteers really were in need of some kind of a manual that would direct them to the best place to tell these people to contact. So we developed this, or it was developed a number of years ago for that primary purpose. And then, as it became known, several agencies in the county and a lot of charitable organizations have asked for copies as well. So I think with this last revision, we probably provided somewhere around 60, 80 copies of that when it came out. And as Monica mentioned, we are just in the process now, or beginning, another major update of it. But it's, it has an index in it, which is probably the first start point. All the categories of assistance are listed in there, and then each organization that provides services in that category is listed in the index. Then there's a large section of the body, which has a page for each organization, and it lists the services, the contacts, the, you know, the hours, all the information that we have about that agency. So it can be pretty easily referred to and contacted. The other sections of the manual are really primarily providing contact and information for a lot of local clubs, the local government units, and other organizations in the county. And then we also list a lot of the 800 numbers for the national organizations such as Diabetes, or Cancer Society, Alzheimer's, and I forget what the other ones were, but, no, but all the 800 numbers, excuse me, all the 800 numbers. And we'll probably in our next update, we'll probably want to include websites and email addresses in there too, obviously. So, anyway, that's just a quick nutshell of the operation manual.
And they have one here.
And you have a copy here in the office. Yes, Gloria has a copy.
It's this copy.
And that's it. So...
What I'd like to do initially with that, to make it easily accessible, is anyone who wants to look at it, who has a need, just come on in. I'd like to put it on the shelf, in our bookshelf back here, with all the reference law books and so on. And Monica, if you can show the spine. Yeah, there we go. It says Operation Help right on the edge, right on the spine. Feel free to go into this room, as long as it's not being used. Take it out, look at the material that you need. That way, you can feel it's in your own privacy. You don't have to tell anybody you're coming in to look at it if that would bother you. And if you have any questions, I think your phone number, the Operation Help phone number is in there, and you'd be able to provide further assistance.
Yep.
The reason that I'm asking that we do that is so that our office staff, which already, if you ask Gloria, she will tell you, and I can confirm that, they are very, very busy. And she, I don't want her to become an Operation Help individual.
Yeah, right.
So they can contact you folks?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Very good.
I should mention that we have written a grant to set up a website. We do not have a website yet. And being totally computer illiterate, I'm not too good at doing that. But eventually, we would like to somehow put it online.
Are you working by any chance with Ken Woolley? Because I've talked to him, and he is working with an organization that will be putting all, most of that information, or additional information, on a website. And I'd hate to see you guys going to a lot better...
We'll talk.
Duplication of work.
Yeah, we'll talk to him. Thank you.
Do you know him?
Do you know Ken? I can give you that information.
Who's he doing it for?
It's through a group that I believe started at the Presbyterian Church. And actually, your office, do you want to state where your office?
Well, we don't actually have an office. This is how we manage to be really good stewards of our money. We have a desk with a phone and a fax machine at St. Paul Episcopal down on, is that, YU, YU, Collin Road, YU. And we have volunteers who are at that phone two hours a day.
Right. That to me is an office, Monica.
Well, people come.
Whether you pay for it or not.
You know, people will come to the church and say, "We want to talk to Operation Help," and it's like, there's, well, nobody's here. It's just a phone office.
Right.
So it's a phone service. And we love our volunteers. We have only one part-time paid staff person who is our coordinator that does all the calling, all the work. And then we have great volunteers. So if anybody wants to volunteer to be a phone volunteer, give us a call.
And should you wish to make donations, our address is in there. But Monica mentioned we are extremely low on overhead. About 94 and some fraction percent of our dollars end up going into our services. So about the five or six percent are in office administration, office supplies kind of thing. So pretty efficient.
Postage.
Yes, right.
You indicated about 280 people were served in 2008, and like 60 so far this year. In terms of frequency of calls, or number of calls, do you have any, I know you...
Yeah, I do.
You didn't have it totaled up, but I guess what I'd like to know is, do you see that increasing a lot over the last four months?
I think we will be, yes. Very much so, because I think we've never been over helping 20 people a month until this past year, and now we're into 27 and 30 and stuff. In 2008, our volunteers answered 1,300 calls. Now, those aren't all, some of those are Christmas. Some of those are people calling saying, "What can I do with something?" We refer people to, we do feet, and stuff like that. But yes, our call volume is up significantly.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just had one question on your phone hours. It says, like, on Monday, 10 to 12 p.m.
Yes.
So it's from 10:00 in the morning till midnight?
That should be...
Oh, it should be. It's wrong. Yeah, sorry.
Good catch.
It's 10:00 to noon every day except Thursday, when we have an evening shift, 7 to 9. We encourage people to come, to call on the evening shift because you probably have a better chance of getting an answer, or not a busy signal, I should say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon?
Next item on the agenda is the amended Class B liquor license for extended premises, Cozy Corner. First Annual Beanbag Tournament, June 12th to 14th, 2009. There is quite a bit of information on that, and you can see the suggested motion at the beginning. And at the last part of that document is the, is from the Police Department. Sandwiched in between is quite a long letter here from Scott, or Ryan, excuse me. Oh, there you are. Ryan?
Hi.
Hi. Did you want to...
Sure.
Address the board on this?
Yeah.
I didn't see you hiding there behind Jim.
How's everyone today? As many of you all know, we've recently now bought Idaho Chuck, and for the past 19 years have been inside the village in, where most of our activities and stuff have correlated with them. Now, on our own, we'd like to do something new. Idaho Chuck's is quite a bit smaller than the village in, and planning on having a grand opening nine months after we've been open, and would like to do something outside, something fun. A lot of our friends have suggested the Beanbag Tournament. As on the map, you can see, we would fence off the parking lot in between the south side of Cozy Corner and the north side of Freedom. I've talked to Paul, the manager of Freedom, and he is fine with that. He's actually fine if we want to even go further. Anything we want, he said we could do. I've already contacted people about porta-potties for the significant amount of people that we think we're going to have. The, it's basically permission for one day of doing this outside. I don't know if I'm supposed to bring this up or not, but there was also talk if we could actually even have it another day. Actually, we're asking for permission to allow us to have this area blocked off. There is another day, actually, the class of 2004 wanted their five-year graduation party, or five-year reunion party at Cozy Corner. And so that's another reason, or another reason to have the amendment or something to allow us to drink outside. I don't know. Is there questions? I don't know, is there questions about what we're wanting?
But you need it from...
That was, that was something new. I mean, our, our first response is to have for the grand opening.
Yeah, but you need it for the 12th, 13th, and 14th?
We need it for one day, Saturday, the 13th.
But you're asking for the 12th, 13th, and 14th?
No, that's when our grand opening is.
Yeah.
In there, it states that, I'm pretty sure that I've asked just for Saturday. We'll be putting it up Friday night, or early Saturday morning. We'll be taking it out Sunday afternoon.
But aren't you gonna need it for the reunion?
Well, that's something that new came up before this.
And what date is that?
I'm 100% sure, they don't know. They were looking at either doing it in North Hudson at us, or doing it at the Hudson House.
You'll need to apply.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's something that came up after the fact, of when we decided to ask for this, that it possibly could be another day. That would be extremely great for our business.
Well, you know, you're asking for June 12th, 13th, and 14th. I don't see any problem in doing that on a temporary basis. I, I would suggest keeping those three dates, so you're not necessarily limited, and we don't have, necessarily have to change the document. Is anybody hearing me on that?
That's fine.
But that does not automatically approve the request for the reunion?
No.
Right, because they don't know the date for the reunion.
Yeah, that's something I'll talk to Gloria about later. That was just talk.
That's a, that would be a second item, I think.
This approval is for the Beanbag Tournament?
Yes.
I love things that are first annual.
Yes.
I really have confidence it's gonna be a second annual.
There's going to be a second annual.
It says that you're gonna have bingo outside on Sunday?
That is talk, we would like to. I mean, it depends on weather. It would be early, it's a free bingo.
Would you be cer, or would people be...
Probably, yes. I mean, I would assume they would.
I really think that, because there's so many things in here that said you're, you're thinking about doing, that if you're gonna do them, we need to have the 12th through the 14th.
Okay.
If you're not gonna do them, then we just do the one day.
Okay.
So we'll leave it at 12th to 14th.
And then whatever they do on the 12th through the 14th is okay?
Uh, only if it's...
Not challenging that, I'm just asking.
No, if it's within the list that you see on page... Well, actually, the motion as presented is very clear. There are five points to that, that are on the, on the first page. Gonna fence in the area, accessible only from within the building. Alcohol stays within the fenced-in area. Dates are 12th through the 14th, during regular hours of business. That's a key point as well. So when would, maybe we should put in here, or define what the regular hours of business are for those three days.
Okay. Uh, Friday and Saturday, they are 11:00 in the morning until 2:30. Wow, excuse me. Do you want what they, well, technically would be, well, 2:30, and then Sunday is 8:00 until 2:00. It's techni, well, because technically, it's Saturday morning at 2:30. Never mind, 2:30 is when we close.
They have a band coming too for us.
So pretty much the fencing area, the music will probably stop around 12:30 to 1:00. That's when everybody from the fenced area will be put inside. And then our regular business hours would be everybody inside, out of the fenced-in area.
What, now what day is the band gonna be there, on Saturday?
Saturday.
Because it says that, something to the effect that the music will end no later than 10:00 p.m.
Well, I, I think we start it at 6:00.
Right.
6:00 to 10:00. I think of what I wrote down, and I don't 100% remember what I've talked to with Gino. But I, I'm pretty sure what I wrote down is what...
It says 6:00 to 10:00.
We talked about, yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to go later than that.
I just wanted to clarify that we weren't gonna have a band out there at 2:30 in the morning.
No, no. I don't see it going later than 10:00 anyways, I mean, four hours is quite long.
See, if we approve this, it's gonna be 10:00.
Oh, yeah, no, I, that's fine.
At 10:00, uh...
That's what I wanted.
At 10:00, we send the chief over, and he pulls the plug.
That mean you're not being in the big band tournament then?
I notice you're also gonna play bingo. That's Beanbag Bingo.
No, it's actually just normal bingo.
Normal bingo, I know.
We're planning on just giving stuff away for free to winners.
And that'll be Sunday at noon? I'll throw this open to the board. If you have any more questions, anything you need clarification on, or if you'd like to revise the motion in any way?
I love beanbags. I guess I would recommend, in the future, next to the second annual, a little more definition in this would make it easier for the board to accept it more readily. Just having defined times and defined dates, it just makes our life a lot easier.
And that is the, probably the biggest thing when we look at the, the motion even, that there is only one time when there's actually a time limit, and that's with the band. So I think that with your motion, you may need to include some timing.
I'd like to change that, where it says outside music to end no later than, outside music to end no... I guess that's all right, but I, I understand what you're saying.
The other day, Friday and Sa, or...
I'm not. Go ahead. I'm not understanding what she said. What, what, what did you mean? Be more specific about the music time. Putting times someplace, you mean for business hours?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you the questions, and that'll help answer, answer this. Friday night, how long are you gonna be outside with the festivities?
Uh, when we thought about it, it wasn't even being outside Friday night. Because we originally stated that we were gonna just do it Saturday.
Okay, so we're gonna change this from the 12th to the 13th and 14th?
If that's what you'd like, we've actually since changed it our own, the date. I originally thought we were just gonna have one day Saturday, the 13th. We've actually changed our own initial date from 13th, 14th, and 15th, on Monday. But there was no, we didn't want to have anything outside Sunday afternoon or Monday. So we originally, we have changed it on there, our grand opening date. But if, I mean, I will change whatever you want because of the days you have. I was coming for Saturday only.
We're only gonna be outside.
Saturday.
The, the dates don't matter. I can be outside Friday.
Okay, so then we're gonna do this June 13th and 14th?
Yeah, Saturday morning.
And how long are you gonna be outside, from when to when?
Um, let's go from 11:00 to, the music stops at 10:00.
On Saturday too, okay.
It's basically outside is just that.
11:00 to 11:00 then?
Perfect.
People still be outside for another hour after the music?
I'll get the music done, and get everybody to get inside. So 11:00 to 11:00, music will stop at 10:00.
Okay.
Okay, the music stops at 10:00.
And that's Saturday, the 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
And then on Sunday, bingo starts at 12:00. So we'll say 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Bingo's probably gonna stop around 3:00. I don't give us an hour to clean up and get everybody inside.
Okay, thank you.
But there's no music on Sunday?
There's no music.
That's beautiful. Gives us something definitive to work with.
In this particular, I wouldn't normally ask this, but I think that what we need to do in the motion is to read each one of these points, so that we're all clear on this. Because we have made so many changes on it. So I would ask someone to...
Just before you do that, just for a point of clarification, the times, Gloria, are we adding them as number six perhaps? How are we...
That would be perfect.
Yeah, okay.
And just to help me out for further, additional clarification, there is an existing Class B liquor license. This request is simply to amend the existing license for this brief period of time and specific purpose only.
Yep, it's an extended premises per, or license. But it amends their, their regular license.
That's correct, Daryl, okay.
And what we do, this is, this is typical of what we would do when they have the motorcycle run, and we allow them to have alcoholic beverages in a fenced-in area outside of the facility. So we're, that's simply what we're doing here, is allowing you to have alcoholic beverages outside of the confines of your building. Would someone like to read the motion with the corrections? Let me, let me try. Please, Joe. And, but I just want to clarify, on Saturday, it's 11:00 till 11:00?
Yes.
And on Sunday, it's 11:00 till 4:00?
Yes.
Okay. But, okay, but you just told us that the music outside would be 11:00 to 10:00. Yes, but just the operation. We're talking about item number six, that I think Terry mentioned. Let me see if I can go through this, and then we can move on. I move that the Class B slash Class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for Cozy Corner be temporarily amended for an event taking place June, I'm gonna say 13th and 14th, rather than the 12th.
Yes.
With the following conditions. Area outside the building to be completely enclosed with secure, not vinyl fence, accessed from within the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced-in area. Item number two, use of outside area only with specific, specific permission of village board for each particular date and event. Here again, it's June 13th, 2009, through June 14th, 2009, during regular hours of business.
I would strike, yeah.
Uh, well, I was just gonna say, as noted in number six below. And then I was gonna talk about the, the hours. But as soon as I, okay, well. Number three, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot areas fenced during time of event. Four, owner to provide adequate satellite restroom facilities. Five, owner to be responsible for band slash music volume, and outside music to end no later than 10:00 p.m. Item number six is the outside area will be utilized from 11:00 a.m. through 11:00 p.m. on June 13th, and 11:00 a.m. through 4:00 p.m. on June 14th. Ryan, how's that with you? I think that's what we were saying.
Yeah.
And you don't need it on the 12th?
No.
We don't need to worry about setup or anything like that here, because we're not serving any, we're not utilizing the space.
They're not serving alcohol, they can do the setup.
So, to me, I think that's clean. Excuse me, before I go any further, I need a second on the motion, so we can discuss it further. Cassandra? Thank you. Okay.
And so we just decided that on item two, there is a period after June 14th, 2009, striking during regular business hours?
Yeah, what was it?
That's the clearest way to do that, would be.
That's fine with me. We gonna leave it parenthetical? Yeah.
Everything else is covered very cleanly in the rest of the points.
Guys, any further discussion? Questions? Mark?
Beanbags, huh?
Mark, you okay with it? Basically, the motion captured what, what was in your, with the edits that we just made, okay?
And that was intentional, so that we are not referring to a document, but actually stating the actual motion.
Down at the bottom of yours, you had, I also recommend Cozy Corner compile a formal letter to the Freedom Value Center advising of the event dates and location. Now, you touched upon that when you said Paul approved of this.
It was never a letter, I went over and talked to him.
Was, is that satisfactory to you, Mark?
That's fine, as long as there's been a conversation.
Yeah. He's fine, he's fine, he knows about it. He said we could have whatever we want, so.
It can't hurt his business, can it?
No. Well, no, I don't, hope not.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Good luck, Ryan. Got one more. Similar issue, similar topic in some ways. And this one has to do with muds and suds being granted a temporary amendment to their Class B license? It's not. Oh, was granted, okay, thank you. Well, Mark, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Zappa, being the proprietor, did you like to just comment on your request?
Uh, no, my letter pretty much sums up everything that is in your package.
I'd ask the board if they have any questions or comments.
I would just ask one thing, Mark. Just you recuse yourself from this discussion, and except for questions that the board may ask you.
If you have to answer any direct questions.
I'd be happy to make a suggestive motion, and we could get it seconded, and then we can discuss if you'd like. George, it's up to you. Go ahead. Uh, I move that the Class B slash K, Class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors be amended to include the volleyball court and walking path with the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation for, for the volleyball courts and walkway shall extend no later than sunset. Two, all operations shall comply with federal and state regulations and local ordinances, with specific attention to the noise levels associated with the activities of a volleyball court. Three, fencing shall be installed around the perimeter of the volleyball courts with a fencing not less than 5.5 feet in height, and not to be in conflict with the existing village of North Hudson Fence, Fence Ordinances. The entrances to the volleyball court should be gated in a manner with posted signs to restrict access to persons under the legal drinking age, 21-years-old, when alcoholic beverages are present. Four, the walkway from the east door of the building to the volleyball court must consist of painted lines, which designates the area where open containers of alcoholic beverages may be present while moving from the village to the, from the building, from the building to the volleyball courts and back again. And that's the end of the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Daryl. Let's open it up for some discussion. First thing that I, I see here is attached to this is the alcohol beverage ordinance that has to do with outside tavern and picnic areas.
And that was pretty much for both of these items, not just for this one.
Oh, okay.
George, I'm not necessarily opposed to the language in bullet point one of the motion, which defines no later than sunset. But I'm wondering if that is, since it's, that's a moving target, albeit within a relatively narrow range, I'm wondering if that is a bit imprecise, and it would be better to have a specific time.
As you indicated, though, it's a moving target. And it changes literally daily. I think in Mark's letter, he mentioned 6:00 to 9:00, or something like that?
Can I comment?
Yes.
Um, it's always been, our goal is, is 9:00. I don't know where sunset came. Wouldn't it be easier to say 9:00, then, is my question?
Yeah, I have, I suggest, if I could, I would suggest. I've always used 9:00, I've never used sunset.
Then why don't we, oh... Yeah, if you'd make a suggestion of 9:00, you know, I would certainly change the motion to accept that.
Mark, is 9:00 when the volleyball ends, or is that when drinking stops outside?
That's when we clear the area outside. And we try to decommence any volleyball-related activity. Village has a noise ordinance that begins at 9:00. So we try to observe that.
Well, I'd, I'd accept, I would, yeah, I would accept amending the item number one to 9:00 p.m. I think one of the concerns is the illuminating the, the courts. So, did you have plans on illuminating them after it gets a little dusky? But they, those lights would not be on after 9:00.
Yeah, turn them off at 9:00 is a great way to get people out of there.
Yes, it is. They start stumbling in the dark.
No, no activities ever planned to be generated past 9:00.
Right. I have a, a question for clarification. Here we are in the state of Wisconsin, where a 10...
Here we are in the state of Wisconsin where a ten-year-old could be served an alcoholic beverage inside your facility if he's accompanied by his, a parent. And the requirement, of course, is to be able to prove that that underage person actually resides in that home with that parent. And yet, we have a statement in here that indicates that no one under the age of twenty-one would be allowed into those volleyball courts while there is alcoholic beverage in there. And so I guess I'm confused and I'm, I guess I turn to my attorney and ask that question.
We treat the, the court area as we do the inside. If, if there's, some parents bring their kids and they'll be out in the picnic tables and it's the same if they came inside. But wandering, non-sponsored people under twenty-one aren't, we haven't had much problem with that, but we don't have that. So I treat it the same as the inside, or we treat it the same as the inside premises. And in fact, we're bound by the same sort of regulations because all it is, is just moving the same set of localities outside, outside the building footprint.
That's exactly why I asked the question.
The league is for twenty-one and over.
Okay.
So it's.
So you're fine with this, too?
George, I've been through this thing for three years. And the, that's the first time I've heard the word sunset when Darryl brought it up, but everything else, I'm familiar with all that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions or comments, concerns? Yes, sir. Please. Could you please state your name and address?
Kevin Atkins, owner of property, seven oh five, seven oh three, seven oh nine, North Eighth Street. I have a question. The fence, it's five and a half feet. Is that, is it plastic, wood?
Mark?
It's just a vinyl fence.
Current, currently it's forty-eight inches, correct? I, the reason why I ask is that balls come over to the other side. And I think it's a great event that Mark has, or muds and suds. My concern is disturbance to the neighbors. And I guess, you know, we've had discussions with the owners. We've asked them to put them in, in line instead in tandem to bring them away from the property. There's, you know, the property was built with a special exception to build within fifteen feet of the lot line. But the real fact of the matter is, is that the decimal levels and the other things still come through the buildings. If we could have a fence, we are going to be putting trees in along our side. But I guess the plastic fence doesn't serve purpose for the balls coming into ours. We've, I've got the insurance, not Mark. They get hurt on my property, it's me. The conditional use, that was done in two thousand and six, was only related to that P I D. number. It was not on the adjoining adjacent lots. So I guess what we would like to see is some type of a permanent fence high enough to keep the activity in and so everybody can have fun. Is that possible?
Yeah, I plan to put a, a higher section of fence on the east side of the property.
Okay. Can it be a wood structure or a chain link fence? If you put a chain link fence, I'll pay for the slats.
Chain link fence, uh, well, we have to go through why chain link, or could we talk about this at another time rather than here?
Yeah, we can, but I've been back, I've been here since oh six and, and, and every time we go and we have a meeting, we, I don't get anything. You know, I'm not asking for it to go away. You know, I can live with it. Can ask our tenants to live with it. I'm just trying to protect, I guess, also our value of our property and also the liability issue that it's inherited. And not that somebody's likely to get hurt, I understand that, but I don't have any idea. It's a plastic fence, they'll try to jump over it, the balls come over, there's alcohol involved. You wouldn't have that in your city park and I've got it next to my building. And so a permanent fence would actually eliminate my li, my liabilities and I can live with the rest.
And how high a fence would you want there?
I, you know, if he wants to build it five and a half feet, see, a permanent fence, they're not going to try to jump it. The plastic fence, everybody's a hero.
Well, if I can address that, this year I've, keeping overlapping openings in them. So, in other words, a fence will crisscross, overlap itself, but there'll be a gap in it so you don't, there's an opening per se, there's no jumping over any fences. If that's the issue, I also plan, like to put up some other netting that's higher than what a fence regulation would go by so we can, if you don't mind me saying so here, avoid the fence ordinance because there's a height ordinance for that.
Lori and I looked at that earlier today. It's a maximum of eight feet in this particular location.
I'm going to guess, Mark, that you're looking for this approval before you put up the fence, or shall I call them fences? If they're overlapping, I'm not sure if it's one fence or multiple fences that overlap, however you want to describe it.
It's the same, I've had up last year, they're half up now. It doesn't take a long time to put up.
All right.
It's a snow fence. It's one of these plastic, orange plastic snow fences?
That's what's there currently.
That's what's there currently.
Right. Oh, and I understand that.
I merely use for demarcation purposes.
I'm assuming that this is something Mark is going to ask to continue so he doesn't have to come back each year. That's why I think it's appropriate for a permanent fence.
And you're going to be planning on putting one up, correct?
Permanent fence? Yeah, I can. I, I could, whatever, whatever can accommodate the, the activity. What's, I don't want to. Implicit in all this, what's overlooked is on the property where the multifamily homes reside, there are conditional use permit required fencing or screening twenty years ago. On the east side of that property, further to the east across the street of A Street, if you will, there you have a wood fence up. Nothing was ever done on the west side, which abuts our property because there was no activity there. So while I'll do what screening and fencing I have to, it's ironic that where the conditional use permit for the multiple, the houses' property in question hasn't been fulfilled yet, what sort of fencing or screening am I going to do? That's if not duplication of stuff that was supposed to have been put in that isn't put in. And their conditional use permit in variances, it was clearly indicated that screening from the commercial property was their responsibility. I've been over this several times. I'll put what I need to put up, but there are, there's written obligations that have to be fulfilled by the properties in question there. I don't want to turn this into, been over and over it.
I think the board needs to clarify what they're here deciding tonight, though, and enforcement of the screening that he's responsible for isn't really on the agenda tonight, even though it is a related issue.
And I've already stated that I'm planting trees. So if you want, I'll plant my trees first and then you can put up your fence, as long as it's done within thirty days.
Yeah.
I, I don't think he can set conditions on when he's supposed to put that screen in. It's supposed to be in already, but that's not on the agenda for tonight.
Listen, I, I, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm, where you've seen the thing, we're using that property at the max two percent of the available time. It's six to nine o'clock, three nights a week for, last year it was three months, this year it may be four and a half months. And it's volleyball. And if you, by, the application sums it up. I'm trying to be responsible about as best I can.
This is not part of the motion, it's just a suggestion. We approve this tonight and you two guys get together and.
No, that's what I asked. I, I'm not opposed to that.
That's it.
I, I have one other procedural comment to make to the board, that what you're approving tonight is an extension of this year's license. Mark has to come back and get a renewal license in about a month, so he's going to have to add this to his renewal license that he goes for. So really, all you're approving is, is the extension for the remainder of the current license, which is, is up at, this is just a one-month thing is all he's going to get out of this.
The outside use had a limitation of September of last year.
That was for the last approval and this is a separate approval here for a timeframe from the time they approved it.
Under the liquor license, I'm strictly, he's talking about liquor licenses and the way they get renewed in Wisconsin annually is, he's a month away from that. So what we approve tonight is only good for a month.
So what I'm hearing you say, this is a request to amend an existing liquor license that expires a month from now?
Yes, that's correct. Which is permitted. There's no problem with that.
I understand, I just didn't understand before you explained it that.
Yep.
All right.
It's my understanding that the outside liquor use that was granted last year ended outside in September. There is no alcohol extension as of now. His permit for his operations, yes, is due in a month, but he currently doesn't have one outside today.
That's what he's applying for.
This is what this is going to do.
He hasn't had anything outside.
That's what this is an application for.
I guess my, I'll go back to my original comment is that the original muds and suds only had one P I D. This is, this property now with the volleyball courts is a combination of another one. And so theoretically, in past, in oh six, oh seven, in oh eight, it was always asked for a conditional u, conditional use permit for that other lot. And because in oh six, it wasn't on it, so technically, everything must be confined to the building right now and that property as presented in two thousand and six and passed?
The conditional use does not govern the alcohol license and he has a lease, legal lease that allows him to use that property and that's what he needs for, because this was turned in the last time it came forward, that's what he needs in order to be able to use the property for.
Right, he has the permission, I understand that, but under Wisconsin state law and in our ordinance here that serving alcohol on a property must go through the planning commission and also, as a business entity, and then also then back to the board. Is that not correct?
I don't think that's accurate. I don't think there's a, a state law that requires alcohol licenses to go to a planning commission, I think they go to the board.
Right, but the use of the premise, though, under its current two thousand and six, limited under the conditional use, limited all the alcohol on, to the inside of that property only, no other property at all. So now, to extend it or to amend that, because we haven't addressed parking, which it was already limited to fifty-two spaces before, now we're going to add more? This is more or less an extension of property with an expanded use of premise and all the other things that we determine, two hundred square feet per square foot, where are they parking, sanitations, last, and, by the way, Mark kept it clean, he did everything right. But I'm actually looking for, we want to grant this, all we've asked for, they said in the past that they couldn't see out there, now they've got a trailer out there to serve food and maybe alcohol, that's fine. So it's all already changed again in two thousand and nine. And all we asked for was a permanent fence, you're asking, you know, his liquor license may be renewable each year, but we're looking at an ongoing business and isn't there a certain steps that need to be taken to address everything that's in our ordinance? Because all we're referencing right now is alcohol, we're not referencing sanitation, parking, or any of those other items. And all I've asked is for a fence and then do whatever you want.
Do you have a specific question? I mean, the board has the right to extend the premises if that, if they so choose to do and the board has the right to set conditions on it.
Are you going, are you going to set conditions then now or are you going to wait a month? If there is any to be imposed?
Just, just to clarify, we are, all we do tonight is, is, it only lasts for one month and Mark has to come back and get a, and ask for this again on his renewal.
Okay, thank you.
George, attached to the previous request for the amendment to an existing license were some comments from Chief Mark and there are, there are none here, so I'm assuming that means you have no issues with this.
Just so I don't get scolded for not coming before the microphone. There should be a memorandum and I don't know if that is included. I, I did provide the administrator with the memorandum, which I guess did mirror the four bulleted pointed conditions that were read as part of the motion.
I didn't see one, Mark, and that's why I was.
Okay. Yeah, and, and just because it was very similar to the Cozy Corner extended premises. If you can't find one, I have a copy of mine.
I apologize, I'm not sure if between Becky and I, we've either inserted in the wrong location or it did not.
Maybe you could just summarize that.
Yeah, sure. And it might actually clarify a couple of the points that were brought up related to the, the height of the fence. In looking at, at, back at the, the most recent change that we had in any extended premises, I, I looked at the Village Inn when they made their patio area back in two thousand and eight. It was a conditional use amendment at the time. It's, it's come to my attention that because of the way that this is working out and because it is a conditional, an amendment to the liquor license, that it's not going to go the same route per se through the plan commission and then to the board. But in keeping with some semblance of, of conformity and, and making sure that there's consistency throughout all of these amendments, I took what amendments were made or what conditions were used for the Village Inn and, and made them applicable to the volleyball courts and the walkway. And that includes the five and a half foot high fence, not to be in conflict with the village fence ordinance. Now, I, because I don't know what type of fence would be most appropriate, I didn't want to call that out and say, you know, it has to be a chain link fence, it has to be a, a wooden fence. I think whatever he felt appropriate to be able to put in, but no less than five and a half feet. And when we discussed it with the Village Inn, when they came forward, it was a lot of the idea of not being able to pass alcohol over a fence or ma, making it more cumbersome to pass alcohol over a fence to someone that might be underage, to give some, some limits to the, the actual boundaries of that area so that, you know, a normal person is not going to step over a small two-foot fence with a, with a can of beer or an open container and expose themselves to some liability, that it would be a chain or a fenced in area that they would have to manipulate something to get in and, in and out of. I did recommend an, the information in here about a gate, which again restricts access to people that are not of twenty-one years of age and there, there could be some controls put on by the employees of muds and suds. And then, in looking at the hours of operation, Mark, the reason you hadn't heard sunset before is because that's where, that's the, the verbiage that I had put in based on the fact that volleyball, I, I didn't feel like it was going to be a illuminated area and so I put sunset, obviously nine o'clock is, and during the summer is going to be well before sunset, we're usually closer to ten P M. by the time that comes forward. All the, numbered, the bullet number two, all operations shall comply with federal, state regulations and local ordinances. No issues with that whatsoever, that didn't come forward because of a, a past problem, but just as a reminder that this area will be controlled by the same set of statutes and regulations that the inside of the building is related to the alcohol consumption and sales. And then, number four, basically, again, was just in it, this is already been done, just to make sure that that walkway remains painted so that it is designated that, you know, from the building to the fence or to the volleyball courts, there's a designated walkway or path that they can utilize and that anywhere that they deviate from that, again, puts them at, at risk for citations or liability. Any questions on my verbal memorandum?
Just one clarification, Mark. In the previous memo, you did indicate enclosed with secure parentheses, not vinyl fence. In this case, Mark is indicating vinyl fence, are you saying that that would not be permitted?
I think the current fencing that he has up is, is a two-foot, I believe, the attorney mentioned that it was a, it's a snow type fence or a snow barrier. I didn't designate in this one, again, because there was no definite. I didn't designate in this one again because there was no definition. I think in the situation with, with Cozy Corner, because of the proximity to the building, it would be, it would be preferential for it to be more of a standardized, long-term type fence. And I think if this is gonna be a four-month process where it's up for four months, you know, with weather, with wear and tear, I, I would recommend that it not be vinyl, but I would leave that to the board's discretion.
Anyone care to amend the motion to include wording that would indicate that this would be a permanent fence as opposed to what could be, could be described as a temporary fence?
I mean, the motion, I would, we could certainly amend that item number three to include another sentence. And that would be, isn't that the, aren't we saying the permanent fence is gonna be needed on the east side? Is that what we're saying? Or we're seeing permanent fence everywhere?
Well, that's what I'm...
Is that what you're saying?
That's what I wanna know. What's the board's feeling on the amount of permanent fence? Does it go all the way around? Is it just on the east side?
I think if you look at your map, maybe you can kinda get a feeling for that.
Suggestion, George?
Yes.
At the risk of stating the obvious, we, we really are dealing with a temporary situation here. We're dealing with only one month.
Month.
In the meantime, it's my understanding that the two gentlemen are going to have conversation about the fence and come to some mutual agreement. And a month from now, when this is back before us, that solution will have been worked out, and then we incorporate that language. I'd just as soon leave it as open-ended as possible for the two of them to come to an agreement for this one-month period.
Beautiful.
Makes sense?
Sure does to me. Alright. Any other comments?
With that, I move the previous question.
All in favor of the motion made by Joe, second by Darrell, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Any abstentions?
Yes.
Let the record show that Mr. Zappa abstained from the vote.
I think actually it's more accurate to say that Mr. Zappa recused himself at the beginning of the discussion. Didn't take part in the board's deliberations except to answer questions from the board.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding, regarding ordinance 6-2009, amending chapter 98 zoning section 98-33, 98-34, 98-56, and 98-57 of the Village Code. And so I would enter a mo- entertain a motion to open public hearing on this ordinance amendment for conditional uses.
I'll so move.
Thank you, Jim. Second by?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. The floor is now open, and anyone from the public who would like to comment, please do so now. The chair recognizes Mike Meiser. Chairman of the Plan Commission.
Yes.
And I'm not speaking as the public, I'm speaking as the chairman of the Plan Commission. Uh, just that, in my chair update later, I was going to mention that that was also on our agenda last month. We tabled it because it is going through Plan Commission and we're working on suggestions and everything. So I didn't know what you were going to act on tonight. Because we haven't looked at it. I mean, we've looked at it, but we, we have lots of questions.
So do we.
Okay.
Stay up there for a moment, Mike.
Well, and, and the timing of the, the posting that's required for us to hear it. If you guys would have approved it, we wouldn't have been able to get it in if we would have waited until after the meeting to do so.
The only thing I'd suggest, if, if anyone is here from the public to discuss it, if, if the attorney would like to explain what it's about, and then it, you can probably do it more succinctly than I.
Sure. Well, I think what, what it is, is about a year ago, the Supreme Court came down with a decision that zoning districts that have no permitted uses, only conditional uses, are suspect, highly suspect as being too restrictive of private property rights. And they overturned a zoning ordinance in the town of Rhine, which is down in Sheboygan County, but applied this ruling pretty much across the board and said it'd be very rare to find a zoning district where the government can simply take away everybody's right to do everything on their own property and make everything, I gotta come to the government to get permission to do anything on my property. So that was the Supreme Court's holding. And basically, the recommendation is that we look at our, right now, we have a commercial, and it's not uncommon. Many municipalities have this. We have a commercial ordinance that says everything is a conditional use. And that is exactly what the Supreme Court is attempting to, to say is way too restrictive of private, private property rights. So the Plan Commission is looking at that and trying to come up with a way to resolve that and maybe have a section of permitted uses, a section of conditional uses, and then prohibited uses, or something along those lines.
And for instance, we were just in, in discussion with Bill Nicolai, our, you know, attorney helping us. We'll come up with some permitted uses, but then it's the question of, well, right now, people come in, they talk to Gloria and say, we're gonna put in a business and whatever, so people know what's going on. And so how we would merge the two. And now, those are some of the questions we have, and we'll be discussing that in the next meeting.
There's no easy answer to that for the next two months because the current valid is, the current ordinance is valid until someone challenges it.
No, I understand. And we're trying to say is for what we would do is so that it would, yeah, not, not, not dealing with anyone coming now.
Yeah.
But what we could do to, to do it all, and like, for instance, we asked to see, maybe Hudson has such a change, and we'll look at their ordinance, and we can, we can go from there.
And they, Terry was good enough to send us samples from, what was it, Waukesha and New Richmond?
Good.
And so those are in their packet, and we've got copies.
We'll get them in our packet then.
Yep.
And that's, that's these materials from here?
Yep.
Okay.
And this was just a draft ordinance.
Oh, yeah. A very good start.
Bill said he has no...
Solicited a lot of questions, and so we tabled it till next meeting. And people are, Plan Commission members are to be sending in their questions and comments to Becky, and she can collate them all, and we'll, we'll discuss them at our next meeting.
So Mike, my question on this is, are we awaiting any more decisions from the Supreme Court? Or do we have to wait until somebody challenges a municipality before the Supreme Court can rule and thus give us more direction?
No, I don't think so. You wouldn't actually get to the Supreme Court because if someone challenged your ordinance, you'd very likely lose at the district court level. And our recommendation would be, don't appeal that, and it would be over, so.
Well, the only reason I mention Supreme Court is because you had brought that up in, in a case or...
Essentially, the law in Wisconsin now is that a municipality's zoning districts probably, you know, 99.9% of the time should have some permitted uses in them. And we need to, our, our advice would be to move toward that goal.
Be very interested to see how this plays out.
Mm-hmm.
And I thank the Plan Commission for taking on this monumental task. I really mean that, Mike. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public out there? If not, I would entertain a motion that we close the public, public hearing. Also move again. Or, also move.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to close public hearing, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D there, I would entertain a motion there that this be tabled for at least the next two months. Then I'll entertain a motion that we table this, period.
I'll move that we table the adoption of the 06-2009 ordinance amending chapter 98 zoning approval, or zoning.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim, Colleen. All in favor of tabling this motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 All same sign. Moving right along. Fireworks permit application. Mr. Zappa, who has momentarily left us, I'm sure to discuss a fence.
Yeah, he doesn't have to be here for this.
He doesn't have to be here, that's right.
This is some explanatory...
And this is something that we've approved in the past.
He needs to excuse himself anyway.
Yes. He would be recusing himself.
He should be, yes.
Can I make a motion?
Please do.
Uh, move to approve the application for the fireworks paraphernalia sale permit for Mark Zappa, subject to approval from the appropriate Hudson Fire Department representatives, and with the following inclusions: no smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under 18 years of age, permit length to be from May 7th, 2009, through 2 June 30th, 2010.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll give this one to Sandra. Alright, Colleen? Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looks like we have another one from the Freedom...
Census is from Safety Center. Kind of Safety Committee. Let me do the suggested motion on that one too, and then I'll retire for the evening. Move to approve the applications for Class C fireworks paraphernalia sale permits for Freedom Value Center as submitted, subject to approval for the, from the appropriate Hudson Fire Department representatives with the following inclusions: no smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under 18 years of age, no backroom storage, with times of operations as stated above, and permit length to be from, to be June 1st, 2009, to June 30th, 2010.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, George. I'll, I'll support this, but it's, it feels like an interesting paradox to approve the sale of explosives at the same location as the sale of flammables. I understand there are undoubtedly all kinds of safety procedures put in place, but it, it, it just seems a bit awkward.
The gasoline is dispensed outside and the fireworks, I believe, are sold inside. They sell the fireworks outside? No. So... Yeah.
So as long as they light the fireworks inside, we're safe?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. Some would say that anyone who lights fireworks is asking for trouble, but that's neither here nor there.
I truly understand, Darrell. It's, it's interesting.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 All same sign. Plan Commission, you're back on there, Mr. Meiser.
Mike Meiser, Chair of the Plan Commission. We met on April 15th. We didn't have too many items. The chapter 98 zoning, we just discussed, and we tabled it until we, we'll discuss it at our next meeting. The other item on the agenda was hearing of applicant Ricky Beach doing business as beach upholstery. And basically, it's, it's pretty straightforward business. The upholstery shop using an existing building does not have any other additional impact on the area. And we, we moved to approve the conditional use, or send it on to you with the following conditions: the building inspector checked the building to see it meets all codes for this type of use. All federal, state, local requirements are met. And there was a request to provide the board of trustees with the square footage of the business. And those are the conditions we put on it.
Has the building inspector performed that inspection?
Not as the date of our meeting, and so now, he usually tells you that now.
What, why was the request made for this?
It was in one of the letters that we had, and I don't know if it was in your letter, but it's something about that it, it wasn't specified on one of the requests.
All the square footage?
The square footage.
Yeah.
I mean, we've never added that before, but it was some document we had in our package that said, you need to answer this question. And, and the gentleman wasn't at the meeting to do it, so we couldn't ask him.
Square footage, 1,200 feet. It's already been answered.
It doesn't reflect my minutes, and I don't have my packet, so I don't see why we were asked to pass that on. Unless it wasn't on that form when we had it.
Right.
Okay. It was an incomplete, it was a missing blank on, on the application.
It looks like somebody added this.
That's what it is.
In blue ink, so...
There you go. So now you know.
Uh, just a, a comment about this. Recently, there were flyers stuck in mailboxes for Mr. Beach's business. I think that was last week. The wind blew, and the rain came down, and those eight-and-a-half-by-eleven white flyers flew all over the streets. The ink ran, making quite a mess, and I picked up several from my property. I wondered, what is this? I think it was premature and rather presumptive that the board would approve this, considering the flyers were all over the place. Just a comment.
Needs no retort.
Does the board have any comments on this conditional use permit application? Uh, if not, I guess we would need to entertain a motion for this conditional use permit. I don't see a, I guess we could use the one from the, just this one right here? The building ins, conditions for Ricky Beach doing business as beach upholstery, 303 Fifth Street North. The building inspector checked the building to see that it meets all of the codes for this type of use. Condition number two is all federal, state, and local requirements are met. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, or is there any need for this motion to be more detailed or as detailed as that which came before the Plan Commission? Is the board satisfied with that?
It's okay, Mr. Attorney?
It's okay.
It's okay. It's okay. Only people of my age will understand that.
It's alright.
All in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have a second on that.
I think you did get a second.
Yeah, I did.
My second.
Sorry. All in favor of the motion as stated, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And that was the extent of the agenda items we had. We did have one comment from the floor on routine business. It's in your packet. And it's just, and I brought this up earlier, and, and Bill Gilbert is, citizen Bill Gilbert wants to change some property lines, and he just came to the meeting because he had a question about the attorney. There was some miscommunications going back and forth about a letter, what needs or needs not to be done. But as you see, Mr. Nicolai said that the Village Board of Trustees will be seeing that next. It, it probably won't go to Plan Commission again. Gloria knows more details. If you need to know more.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. The finance com-
Yeah.
The finance committee had a relatively short meeting this evening because our sole topic of discussion was to approve to pay our bills. And so, I would ask that, I would entertain a motion to approve our non-recurring claims.
I'll move.
Second.
I would need to hear an amount.
Oh, to the, I suggest we, I move we approve April 2009 non-recurring claims totaling $27,636.56.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Darrell. Any questions?
Correct.
Gotta take a roll call. Starting with Ms. Whalen down the end there.
Yes.
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 Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Colina Bryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Zappa.
Yes.
Ben Klein says yes also. Thank you very much. Moving right on to Public Works. I notice that there's no paper in here. There was no meeting. Anything in particular that you feel needs to be brought up? Mark, shall we, uh?
We're not acting on anything, so.
No. The meeting isn't on the agenda.
All right. Chair update, so. Public Safety Committee. Joe is our new Public Safety Chairman, and did attend the, the last meeting.
Made that one.
Yep, made that one.
Yeah, we're worried tonight.
So I would ask, Joe, anything that you don't think are updates?
I would just refer everybody to the, uh, meeting minutes. There isn't anything that we're bringing forward to that we have to act on as part of this committee, so, if you got any questions, you know, after the meeting, you know, I don't know something about, you know, talk to Mark or I, but it's all in here. We don't have anything that we need to bring to the Board.
I did ask the Chief though, that if he, he would just, uh, talk a little bit about Neighborhood Watchers, so. Part of the reason he stayed here so late.
Just to bring it forward, that the Neighborhood Watch Group has, uh, kind of revitalized itself. We have a citizen volunteer who has, uh, offered to take over and to try to help organize the group. Uh, his name is Adam Sack. He's a resident of Fox Tree Lane. Uh, he's also a Police Reserve. You may have seen the article about him in last week's paper. Uh, he's been helping out the Police Department in a, a number of different smaller, but very important, uh, items, including revitalizing our speed trailer. Uh, Adam will be taking over, uh, the community portion of the Neighborhood Watch. And the next meeting is this Thursday at seven PM, right here in this room. Uh, and, uh, the Police Department will be represented by Officer Matt Grams at that meeting. And so if there are any questions, any concerns that neighborhoods have, to let you know that we have a Neighborhood Watch, we do have an email list that goes out every time that we have a meeting. Uh, if you're interested in being included in that email, uh, please let me know. Uh, I'm the one that sends out the mass email, so please call the, the Police Department at three eight six eight four three three, give Becky or any of the officers your email address. We'll get it attached to the list so that you get updates on when those meetings are coming forward. So, uh, nothing specific, uh, this week, uh, other than just kind of revital, revitalizing it. We do have a, a retired FBI agent who will be doing a little bit of a discussion with Adam about internet safety regarding children. But I know that that topic will continue into the next meeting, because we did hear that there was a third grade concert that evening, and so we're expecting that we may have a few people who have to miss because of that. So we'll reserve a lot of the topics until the next meeting, but we want to make sure that anybody that's interested in coming on Thursday, uh, to show up and get your neighborhood involved. We do have signs that are available to put up in your areas. Uh, at each entrance to the village, there is a large Neighborhood Watch sign, and so people are aware that this is a program that's, that's started quite a while back. Um, and, uh, we, we took a little bit of a hiatus when we had some shortages on the Police Department, but we're trying to build that back up again, so. That's when I had any questions about Neighborhood Watch?
And that's this Thursday, May seventh?
Correct.
Just want to make sure everybody is aware of that, because I know that this broadcast goes out throughout the month, so. Thursday, May seventh, seven PM. Thank you very, Mark, very much, Mark, I appreciate it. Uh, next is Public Welfare. Any, anything from Public Welfare?
Public Welfare did not meet last night, and we currently have nothing that we are acting on or require the Board's approval for, so, uh, I will pass. Thank you very much.
Okay. Park Court?
Uh, we had our, um, vote on the Summers Park, um, location as a possibility for the skate park. That did not pass, um, due to, um, concerns of the citizens nearby. Um, although we did try to address, um, most of those concerns with the, the noise. Um, we had said that they would be, um, concrete, which is quieter. Um, but they were concerned about, um, the, just that the possibility that it would attract, um, the wrong sort of kids who would get into trouble. Um, and they were concerned about noise and some other things, so it did not pass. It still is an idea that we would like to have, um, a possibility, but there's really not that much buildable park space in the village for that. And, um, we're also working on the playground at, or park up at the Derek Construction, or the, that development. We'll be getting, hopefully getting the playground put in, park put in, um, this spring and summer. Um, continue, continue to work on our, um, five-year plan and that. But the only thing that we need approval on tonight is the new sign for Eagles Wood Park, I mean, yeah, Eagle Woods Park, um, on Helen Street. That sign is not good. Um, and this one would be similar to the one at Woodcrest, which was approved a couple months ago. Um, you see a picture of it in your packet. And it will be in color, similar to the other one. So I would like to move to approve the purchase and installation of sign from Webo Signs for Eagle Woods Park, not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars.
So move. Oh, you moved, I'm sorry, I seconded it. Sorry to have to rain on your parade this evening. Could this wait one more month? It's not on the agenda.
I gave it to Gloria to put on the agenda.
All right, we understand.
Can we wait one more month?
Okay.
Sorry, I have a new, new staff, I've been dealing with, uh. Okay, next month. Save it for next month.
Save it for next month. We'll, we'll build interest on that, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Better tuck that award away, George.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I had a, uh, a busy week last week, as what happens, uh, after the reorg meeting and before the first org meeting in the month of May. I had a govern-, intergovernmental meeting on April twenty-seventh. And periodically, I'll be reporting on, on these things, and it, I'll give you more detail on that as we go through. You'll notice on the agenda I have here, goals, objectives, and tasks. And I'll have an opportunity to talk a little bit more about that. On Tuesday the twenty-eighth, I attended the Board of Review meeting in Hammond with, uh, Mr. Stanifer, and also with Lori. And so we are now certified? Certifiable. And we're, we are ready for all those who will join us for our Bor-, first Board of Review meeting, which will be June fifth. First, June first at seven o'clock, or five o'clock. I started the quote until it was corrected. So the first Board of Review meeting will be June first, five o'clock PM. On Thursday, the thirtieth, I went to the Municipal Law Seminar, uh, which was conducted by Baki Norman. And, uh, our esteemed attorney was, uh, also there. And I just want to hold this up and say how impressed I was with the presentation. And also with the fact that our Village Hall is featured right here. So, that, I looked at that and I said, that looks good down there. Okay. It was an excellent seminar. And what I wanted to point out, uh, is the topics that were covered. I only wish I could have gone to all of them, but, uh, some of them were held concurrently. Assessments and Municipal Boards of Review in a Declining Market was a, actually an excellent presentation. And, uh, I will probably use some of Bridget's materials when, on June fi-, first. Uh, the one that went concurrently with that was Understanding Municipal Financial Statements. The next one that I attended was An Introduction to Zoning. And the one I couldn't attend was a primer on alcohol licenses. And then we had a very interesting panel discussion where those of us in the audience, and I'm guessing there were at least, uh,
We had about eighty.
Eighty? Okay, I had done a rough count of fifty, but so, yeah, about eighty. And there were some excellent questions that came out of that. All right. Next, um, Gloria, I'm gonna, just to move things along a little bit, I know that you, I'll give you an opportunity for anything that you have to share with the understanding I can come back and talk about the goals, objectives, and tasks.
Okay. Well, you'll see the directory of elected and appointed officials in your, your binder. And if you would please take that out, um, and take that with you, so that I don't have to make another copy.
It is on the website though, right? Is it?
It has not been updated yet.
Oh, okay.
These changes were just made a week and a half ago.
All right, thanks.
You'll also see a copy of a check for a hundred dollars that, um, the village received, uh, for a report that I filled out, uh, for the State Election Board. It's an incentive to, to get, um, things reported accurately and timely. But it can only be used for election items. Um, and then also, um, you'll see there's a library survey in here. Jim O'Connor dropped that off. He, um, said that the Board wanted to look at that information, and if he, they felt that they wanted him to come back to, um, to speak about it, that he would do that.
Since you mentioned that, uh, I had a two-hour-plus meeting with Jim just a cou-, a week or so ago, in which he provided me with a lot more information. Uh, I subsequently asked him if he would come before the Board and give a presentation in the very near future, which he agreed to do. So you'll be seeing Jim come in here, uh, giving you those materials, um, probably in a month or two.
And that was it?
And that's it? Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's get back to goals, objectives, and tasks. I put together some information that I'd like to share with each of you. If, just like school, take one, pass the rest on. I'd like to talk a little bit about this. I'm a firm believer in setting, if, if you don't have goals and you don't know where you're going. And, uh, I borrowed this from a Dr. Philip Humbert. He talks about, uh, the ten steps to set and achieve your goals every time. And you'll notice that there are ten points. I won't read them all, but I'll just go through the highlighted words. Every one of these is a characteristic of a reachable goal. They're specific, they're simple, they're su-, significant, they're strategic, they're measurable, they're rational, they're tangible, they're written, they're shared, and they're consistent with our values. And, uh, as I, as I read this over, I thought, how applicable that could be to us. And the quote at the bottom by Booker T. Washington, "You measure the size of the accomplishment by the obstacle you had to overcome to reach your goals." What I'd like to do now, I have, I'll tell you what I've done, and what I want to do before I hand out this next packet. I started brainstorming about what are the things that we as a Board and we as a village should be accomplishing. And before I share that with you, I'd like to get your input. Each of you serves on at least one committee. And I'd like, after we hand this out and have some brief discussion about it, uh, take it back to your committees. Think about these things. I'm not asking you to do anything yet. But I think we need to know where we're going. And I want to share this also with the department heads. Gloria, you have a copy? And I want to give Mark and Mark a copy also as we go through this. It's a little exercise. Pardon me, it's the school teacher in me, I guess. Oh, and by the way, I picked up a handbook, um, from a school where I substitute teach. And every month in this handbook for the kids, it says, "Goals for the Month." Well, I got thinking, if the kids can do it, we ought to be able to do it. So I'm gonna go up to the whiteboard now, and, uh, and I'm gonna ask you to just free-think about perhaps some of the goals that your committee, or you think the village should have. Hopefully, this is an exercise, which maybe we can all, it won't take too long, but, uh, hopefully you'll find it valuable. So free-think. You know, kick it around. What's a goal that you have for what you want it to do in the next month, the next six months, or the next year? Or maybe you say, here's one, but I don't think we'll ever be able to do it. Anybody got an idea?
I'll throw one out, George. We've accomplished getting the website rebuilt, and somewhat functional. But it needs to be more interactive and user-friendly. We have basic information on it now. So my goal there would be to, uh, work with staff. And this is a goal I've had for a while, but, you know, we needed to, we need to do it. A little more training and involvement, so they're comfortable, and it's not such an effort to, um, put up information such as, uh, meeting notices, uh, minutes, and, uh, make it much like cable TV is, uh, a common way of communicating.
Thank you, excellent. Okay. I'll share that, I'll open it up to you guys too. We've got our engineer, we've got a member of the community, a neighbor, Public Works, Police Department, Administration. Jeez, even got six more, six board members here. Come on, I came up with a three-page list.
Let's see your list.
Uh, not yet.
I'm the bean counter.
You know, a lot of stuff, a lot of ideas can come up that don't cost anything, or cost not too much.
Well, I'm the bean counter, so the bean counter says we need to stay at or under budget.
Under?
At or under.
Okay?
I think this is an achievable one, but I think to continue to provide professional police services to the village.
Oh, sure.
May or may not include manpower coverage, looking at the one rate of monthly.
And how are you gonna help do that?
Say it again?
I was gonna say.
Give it to me in a, give it to me in a couple of words, not yet?
I just said provide professional police services.
It'd be refreshing.
I dare to open my mouth.
Okay? What about Public Works?
My biggest goal would be to, uh, upgrade, uh, Public Works equipment.
How about any particular street you might want to talk about?
As for immediately having a deal, do you?
Yeah.
Upgrade, uh, actually the, well, my number one goal would be to, uh, completely upgrade Sixth Street North from, uh, the bridge to, uh, Summer Street North. Potential, I'd like to upgrade the entire infrastructure along with the street, but right now, just take care of the actual drive lines and the street surface.
We had a meeting I didn't mention, because I kind of felt it was gonna come up. And it was last Thursday, and we met with the State Department of Transportation, as well as the County Highway Department of Transportation. And, uh, what you will see coming before you for the month, in the month of June, uh, for your approval, is to allocate, uh, some funds to help with the restoration of just the surface of the road. It'll be very easy, we can go into more detail later, but I know that what we'd like to do, what Mark would like to do, is to be able to dig down deep and replace the infrastructure. But unfortunately, the state, it would take probably about five or six years of planning before we'd be able to do that. The state came along and said, "We have money allocated to fix Sixth Street, take it or leave it."
Wow.
We're gonna take it.
Let's hear it for them.
But the state will only do twenty-four feet. This road is thirty-two feet. We've got to come up with the money to do the other eight feet. I think.
What's that cost?
The estimate was less than thirty thousand, wasn't it? But that was only a ballpark number.
Yeah, that does not include, uh, casting.
Let's not digress.
Okay, so just so you know where we're going and why that came up. Okay, anymore?
Work on the, um, a process for, um, dealing with the part-time staff, how to get the dealing with the part-time staff, how to get the workflow to account for two left stays a week.
Didn't you have another one about to complete and update the employees, I don't know what's on, handbook or something like that?
Oh, that was Mary's.
Yeah, no, I always thought it was a problem.
Yeah, that is a good point. The employee handbook needs to be badly updated.
I would also say there are other streets within the village that need to be repaired besides Sixth.
Did I just write down the word pacer?
Yes. Yeah, obvious, well, pacer report will tell us which ones, but we need to fix, there's a, there's a couple of them.
Got all that in six minutes. It's not too bad. I'm gonna go back to my, I'm gonna hand these out. This is just what I came up with, as I said, just brainstorming over a couple of weeks. And I wanna go over a couple of these so you can see where I'm coming from. Because I have samples too. You've just added, you've just added some that I didn't have on my list, so this is great. You also have some up there that have been hugging me for a while. So let's take a look at these. Turn this off. Yeah, push that. Okay. If this looks aggressive, well, it's supposed to be because we, we can talk about these things and dismiss them, put them on the back burner, and so on. So let's take a look first at the, by the way, on the left column, what you'll see is they're broken down by finance, just exactly as you saw it in the document that Gloria, let me, just, this, no, no. It was the list of all the, all the people, the, this, the directory?
Directory.
Directory, yeah.
Yep.
What I did is I took this directory and I just went right down the directory and listed all the groups. So what you see first is finance slash personnel. Review all job descriptions. Develop employee evaluation tool. Evaluate supervisors semiannually using the employee evaluation tool. This is something that Larry Larson and I had talked about on numerous occasions. And what we need to do is have a personnel file for every employee. I can't imagine anybody in industry, if you're running a big business, you better be having personnel files. You can kick that around, but all I wanna do is just present these at this time. As far as trustees are concerned, update and review the ordinances with consequences for noncompliance. It's one of the areas that I think is, it's something that we have been looking at for a long time that, or have been talking about, and it's time that we do something about it. So with the help of our attorney, with the help of our, our clerk or administrator, we ought to be able to start working on these. And again, it's the, that's, this is like the chocolate elephant. And the question was, how do you eat a chocolate elephant? And the answer is, one bite at a time. And so when we look at a huge project such as updating or reviewing the ordinances, that's a big job. We don't have to do all of them at once. So we set out a calendar and we say how many we're gonna do. Now, the next one. Now, for this, Gloria, gonna need your help here. There was a video that we talked about back in March, and many of us did see it. And we just need to make sure that all the board members, including our newest board member, gets to watch this 19-minute DVD. I understand you have two copies, right?
Yes.
Do we have, just, this is a yes or no? Has everybody seen it?
No.
Thank you. So those who haven't watched it, would you please ask Gloria if you could borrow that video? It's actually quite good. I learned something. It's kind of fun to watch, too. Next, order business cards. Now, this may seem silly, but-
We tried.
You tried?
Oh, yeah.
Well, what, my instructions weren't detailed enough?
No, we were, we had an aside conversation here. I'm very sorry.
Oh, okay. Next one I had in here was order business cards. It may seem like a trivial matter, but as I collected business cards from those people who are currently using them, this is, this is what I came up with. So you see that the police department has a really colorful one, and Gloria has some that she made. She's got the program and got all the, all the paper, fancy paper and all that. And Mark's got one. So for those down this end of the table, and what I'd like to do is anyone who thinks they need or could use a business card, that's real easy, Gloria will knock them off for us. And the reason that I brought this up, because wherever, when I, right?
Sure, George.
Hey, well, you told me you were, yeah, I remember vividly when you said, "Look how easy it is for me to make these," and you were even gonna show me the paper. We could have them professionally done. Did you like that? No, I'm just teasing. We could have them done outside, but we've got a professional right here, and we're not talking about, sometimes the problem is when you order them from an outside vendor, the smallest quantity they'll make is 500. I don't have any need for 500, but it does look very professional when we go to a conference, we go to a meeting, and someone asks where we're from and we hand them their card, our card, just like they've been handing me theirs. I just throw that out as, you know, just something real simple. There's a document that Baki Norman sends us, which I have found to be chock-full of valuable information. And I know it's gonna sound weird to you, Terry, but I enjoy reading the municipal law alert. I think you all get this, and I hope that you take the time to look at it. So here's an objective, read the law alert. Check that off, Mr. Bean Counter, right? Doesn't cost anything. They send it to us, see? And you get a lot of really valuable information from it, so I would hope that you would read that. While I'm on a, on that topic of reading stuff you get, there's another document that we get on a regular basis, and if we, if you don't get it, let me know, and I'll make sure that you get, do get it. The document is called the municipality. It's put out by the League of Municipal, League of Wisconsin Municipalities. And the one I'm holding up here has invaluable information on it, if you're on the Public Safety Committee especially. And if you're a board member, you need to know about the law regarding the police and fire commissions. In fact, Mark circulated it among all the members of the police commission. I got a copy of it, and it came right out of here, didn't it? It's, it's excellent. Darrell, did you get it? Did you see this?
Negative.
You've got it now. Excellent, excellent document. It tells you what the law is and what you can and can't do. Item five on here, discuss and adopt sustainable community principles. Well, folks, I gotta tell you, Darrell and I were at the intergovernmental meeting where the, where this was handed out. And in next month's board meeting, we will be taking a close look at this very document, which is described as the Sustainable Community Principles. I won't get into them now, but it's one of those things that you'll be asked to take a look at in the next board packet. Complete the developers' agreement with Dean Hanson. We, that's something Larry had indicated to me needs to be done. So I guess that's something that I'll probably be calling or talking to-
Probably wanna let us-
-you about, and we can get that taken care of. It's, to me, it's just one of those things that's sort of outstanding right now, and it does need to be taken care of. Next one I have, invite reps from committees to present. This evening, I started it off with asking Les to talk about Operation Help. And as, it seems to me that the part of our job is to make our community aware of certain opportunities or just what's available in our own community. And this might be a way to do it, is to just invite folks in to give a brief presentation. Tonight, we were supposed to have recognized Larry Larson. I have a plaque here that we were going to present him with, and hope that we will be able to do that in June. And then what I'd like to do is recognize people who do serve our community, most of whom, most who do it for no compensation except the satisfaction that they're helping their own community. I think we need to do more of that. We don't do enough. So I was pleased that we were able to recognize Gloria tonight, and I want to extend that even further. I have in here, settle fire costs with St. Croix Ventures. There is still an outstanding bill of approximately $43,000, and we are working on that with our attorneys, just so that you're aware of that. See, these are things, again, where it's not costing us any more than the attorney's time, but in the long run, it's gonna save us, in this case, hopefully, $43,000, which we could use to upgrade Second Street. I just, see, that's a wash kind of thing, isn't it? Second Street. Huh? Third, excuse me, Sixth Street. We do have, that's right, we do. I'm thinking, you know, Second comes right down the hill, right in Sixth Street, Sixth Street. I knew that. I was just testing you guys.
Or Fine Boulevard.
Under public safety, I had complete the village emergency management plan, and I know that that is really close to being done, isn't it? And that's a document that I would hope that you would all, it's one of those things I hope you keep, use it. It's so full of valuable information. It's like the who's who in emergency in this whole area. Notice, Mark, I got some stuff on there. See that? Check that sucker off, right? All right. And then we've got upgrade streets, and Joe, this is what we were just talking about, some of the streets, where I just used the word, threw the word pacer up there.
We were just talking about the same thing.
Yep. All right, so upgrade streets per pacer. Upgrade sewer and water west end of Monroe Street North. Now, when I say the west end, you know where I'm talking about?
No.
Shopyards.
Okay.
Yeah. We have an issue down there.
That's already underway, too.
It's under, it's underway, right? There you go. So we're working on it. This is great. But that, we, we document it, and then, then we get to check that stuff off. Another check mark there, okay. Now, number four, complete the landscaping of village hall. What do you think? How's that one coming? Mr. Public Works. Public, what are we gonna, what are we doing with the landscaping of village hall?
Right now, it's basically, across the street is supposed to be done, basically, it's cut for that end of the street. Rest of landscaping, I will have to get with Becky. I know she was supposed to pick out some plants and stuff like that. I don't know if she's still planning on doing that. We have some of the saw you can see got peeled off there in the winters. We have to replace-
Yeah.
The ball field areas, we have to reseed it.
Okay. I'm not, I had something, I'm marking off a different copy than the fresh one that you have here, so I might have missed one or two in here, but you'll, you'll forgive me on that. Develop, Sandy, number one, right there under public welfare. See that, develop, update, schedule for village website. What I had in mind for that one was making sure that whether it be once a week or every two weeks, make sure that that gets attention. And if it, if it requires that we hire a high school kid or a college student who'd like to come in, who's really savvy on this stuff and do it for the staff, maybe that's an answer. I just have it down there as a goal. So that when we have, for example, leaf pickup Monday and Tuesday of this week, that it's out there on the website, and it's out there as soon as the board says yes. As soon as we have the date, next day it ought to be out there so that we all know what we're, so that our, our public knows what we're, what we're doing. Got one on there that I know you've been working on. Jim has been working with waste management for, I think since you've been on the board, haven't you?
It's my first month.
Since your first month, and I put that on there so that we've got it, and I know that you're working on it. It, this does not mean that it's not getting done, it just means, yeah, it's in our face. While we were at the intergovernmental meeting, we learned that the, well, there was a discussion about the 2010 U.S. Census. And we got a document, I have a, I have a copy of the document, suggestions for, and Gloria, you may have gotten this booklet from the U.S. Census Department. They're, they're encouraging us to do something to promote the census. And I thought that was rather strange, that we need to promote something that's definitely going to be done. But we need to just put our thinking caps on, figure out, okay, what do we do regarding an awareness campaign for the census?
We're supposed to develop some type of a committee that addresses those items.
We need another committee.
Yeah.
We don't have enough committees, let's create another, okay. I had down Board to Review, attend the training, which several of us have done. And Gloria, is yours, yours doesn't expire for another year, is that right?
No, mine is expired.
It is?
But we only needed-
One.
One on the board, and we have three. So I can always take mine online.
Oh, you, I didn't know you could do that, okay. The next one on here, park board. I got these right off of your minutes. Does it look familiar?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you notice each one of those has a blank. We need a verb in there, so you know, as I put this stuff in quotes. Okay, now, so for the goal, we need a verb for the warming house. I didn't know what you were gonna do with the warming house. I thought maybe it was paint the warming house, or-
Well, the door is broken, and there's a couple other things.
Fix the door. In other words, you needed some repairs, repair the warming house. This way, we, we just verbalize, you know, verbalize, okay. Next, police commission. I didn't have anything for that. I don't have anything for, oh, yeah.
Back to what's above, I understand all of those except the runoff issue. Did somebody disappear?
We're still looking.
That's a police matter, right?
Real soon, Darrell.
That could be the disappeared or they just keep on talking.
That would be a run-on issue.
Run-off, runoff, I'm sorry.
The others, I just listed-
All levity aside, what is it?
I don't know, that's, that's due at the park, so you'll have to tell us.
Be a washout or something, somewhere, water run.
I couldn't remember which park that it was, so that's why I-
We have 32.
Erosion in one of the parks?
Isn't it, Mark, isn't it the property over there?
I'm thinking it's across the street again, I don't know. I don't either. Someone brought it up at the park board and I couldn't remember.
Jim put it on, huh?
Jim put it on, yeah. If that were the case, Jim, I think it would be under every one of these committees, wouldn't it? You figure that way it'll get done. I know you are.
Was that what this is?
Not having ever attended a police commission meeting, I leave that up to, to you, Mark, or to the police commission, if you got some goals. Just, just some stuff, you know, like, one or two would be good, okay? Under Historic Preservation Committee, this is a, this, this item number one here, develop a history of the village, a book, a pamphlet, a brochure, or something. I hate to have to say this, but the key people who can tell us so many incredible stories about this little village are really old. To die off, we have already lost. Like Mark, for example. Unfortunately, and Mark knows what I mean about this, we're losing, we're losing some of the people who are gonna take with them some of the history of this, and the stories of this village. Our president, our former president of this board is full of stories. He grew up here. We got Mark who grew up here. Tony, his, his dad and mom could tell you stories. I have a neighbor who will tell you the stories about the pet bear that they used to walk down to the Dairy Queen. There's so many of these really neat stories, we need to capture them. And so what I would request is that the Historic Preservation Committee get together on a somewhat regular meeting schedule and try to put this stuff together. Go down to the newspaper, the Hudson Star Observer has just amazing pictures, and old Willis Miller had done so much really good work on the history of this community. Let's see if we can capture that and make that available to our- Let's see if we can capture that and make that available to our, our citizens in some sort of a brochure. I know of neighboring communities who have actually done something like this, where they actually write a book about their community, and they're not much bigger than ours. The interesting thing to me is how young this, this municipality really is. This is not an old municipality. When you go back to the East Coast, you try to do a history of an area, and you're talking about going back pre-revolutionary war. But here, I mean, we're talking about a community where we have people who can remember when this was a very, very young village. So let's see if we can do something with that.
George, on that note, maybe that committee should also be responsible for the upcoming centennial of the village.
There you go.
Which I don't know exactly what year it is, but I know it's in the...
It's upcoming.
Well, it's a different text.
Probably 100 years, isn't it?
Well, yeah, specifically the year that, that would be...
1912 is the year, so it'd be 2012.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
All right, so we better get busy, because it could be a long project. So you see other things on there. You see that I included the library board, and I just indicated that Jim O'Connor will be coming before us and will be giving a presentation. I don't know, I don't know a thing about cable TV, so I leave that up to Mr. Thomas and his committee.
It's pretty straightforward, and it was advantageous with the wiring of all the cameras in here with the village phone in connection with Nate and things that happen behind the scenes, but it's a very smooth operating board that really doesn't need that much participation from the board.
Well, one of the things that I, I know, and I may be off on this, but there was some discussion at the state level regarding, and some legal stuff about competition and so on. We just, I think the board needs to be kept aware of that, what's going on there.
That's a good point, yeah.
I already talked about the Joint Fire Advisory Board, oh, no, I'm sorry. Ah, under Joint Fire Advisory Board, it was somewhat of a surprise to me, because I, it was not something I really thought about until after we had our fire here. When we were at the intergovernmental meeting, I brought up something that I hope the other municipalities will share with their constituents as well. And that is, making sure that your property has fire suppression built into your insurance policy. If you have a, if you live in, let's say, a single or even a multiple-family house, the chances are excellent that you would not need to have any fire department, fire suppression issues outside of mutual aid. However, if you have a building, such as we have a warehouse here, the owners of that property better make sure that they have coverage for fire suppression. Each of us in our homes has a fire insurance. It covers the dwelling, it covers the, or the contents, and there is something in there about fire suppression on most policies. All right, when you own a large business, especially if it's a repair shop of some kind, where you would have volatile, volatile materials in there, you better make sure that fire suppression is in your policy. Otherwise, you may be facing what the owner of the property here is facing. All right, almost done with this. Lower St. Croix River Partnership Team, we do have a committee that will be attending some of those. I've attended one of those meetings, and I've turned it over to Mr. Fogg, who will be attending the next one. Sewer Service Plan, not sure what that is. I'm sure Mark could help me out with it, because you and I are on that team together, I believe, aren't we? So we'll have to get together or whatever. Administrative Staff, I have on here what I alluded to earlier, and that is evaluate all staff semiannually using an evaluation tool, which has yet to be developed. Then there are some things here that are on our sign. Right at the top of the list is purchase and install an emergency generator. We've already done a lot of that legwork, so what will be coming before you within the next couple of months is a request to advertise. Right? Do we need the board approval to send that out? I think we have all the specs done, and we just need to send that out, is that correct?
Yeah, we have to place it for RFP.
Okay. All right. Number two on here is something that Jim and I were talking about earlier today. The terminology I use is investigate deer abatement. That's a, kind of a general statement. Would you like to tell them what you and I were talking about?
Real briefly, a lot of communities such as ours have already implemented procedures to try to control the deer population, and it's something that, if gone unchecked, will get to be a problem in the future. And we want to just start to make some presentations to the village residents as to what to be watching for and what we can possibly do that really disrupts things minimally, and we can control this population.
We need a location for a beta test. I'll volunteer two lots.
I would guess, Darrell, that there are, most of the residents in the community would volunteer their backyards or front yards. Almost done here. Yeah, let's see, revise the employee handbook. I think somebody put that up there already. And, by the way, I will be adding all these. This, this is a document that's in process, and so I will keep developing it. Revise the village letterhead. I have a couple ideas about that. The village letterhead, the village paper we've got now is rather outdated, and I have some ideas that I'll share with you in the future. I don't know what I think about number six or number seven, but this wall behind me could be utilized. While we were at WICC recently, or at that Law Review, I was, I was sitting there looking at the wall behind the speakers, and there was a 10-foot whiteboard, and I thought, I think I know what we need in the village hall. We need a whiteboard a little bit bigger than that.
Big enough, yeah.
That's, that's not even half as big as what we'd like to see, that we could use on this wall here. And again, I apologize, but it's the old school teacher in me. So this is a start, folks, and your input is welcome. As you have a brainstorming session with your committee, if you want to email me, here's what we came up with. If you want to include it in the notes, the minutes of your meeting, that's great, because we read, I think all of us read all of that stuff. So I throw it back to you. Any comments? From the peanut gallery or from the dais? If not...
Move to adjourn.
Second. There you go. I'm sorry if this inconvenienced you by an extra half hour, but...
Very good.